She says officially she didn't have it. She had it. She says officially she didn't have it. She had it. It was good, kind of all I had was like some of the work. There to like I got it. It was all coming in the same thing.
Audience here.
I sent out the emails on Friday and that was on their calendar already.
See, that one is mine.
Give me a text.
All right, let's call my daughter. All eight of them. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so can I get the bank balances?
Yes. For the general fund, six hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. For sewer general, two hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Municipal court, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars and forty cents. Corrections, three thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars and fifty-nine cents. Cash bond, seven thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars and thirty-six cents. Judicial, four thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. Four and five cent gas, twenty-five thousand, five hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. Seven cent gas, seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Rebuild Alabama, fifty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-one cents. Sewer customer deposits, thirty-five thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars and twenty-three cents. Sewer capital, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and one cent. Community development block grants, fifty-one dollars and seven cents. American Rescue Plan Act, two hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred seventy dollars and sixty-four cents. Capital savings, twenty-six thousand, ninety-eight dollars and one cent. For a grand total of one million, five hundred eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to accept the bank balances? Got a motion from Larry, that's second. Second from Terry, all in favor. All right. So, let's see, Ms. Lamay and Ms. Ford. Y'all have it.
I can go first, that's all right. Hello, Mayor Tony Craig, good council members. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I represent, actually myself and some of the people of Gingerwood Estates Development, which is off of Owens Road. And I've lived there for four years, on one hundred Hidden Branch Road. My house is the first house on the right as you turn into Hidden Branch Road. When I moved there, the road was beautiful. It had paved asphalt topping. It was in great shape. But about eight months later, after September of twenty nineteen, Hyde Homes started to build new houses at the end of our development, which was fine, but the heavy trucks, due to all the traffic and the heavy weight of these trucks, tore up these roads terribly. It was so bad, at one point, I could not even get out of my driveway. I had to get off of my house by using my lawn. And I came here to City Hall that day and I said, I need help. There is a security issue. I can't leave my driveway or drive up my driveway. And a police officer followed and met me there. He says, you're right. The asphalt had actually been remupped in about a foot and a half, right at the base of my driveway. And within a few days later, there were some men that came and dug all that area up. They did a good job of that and they put a whole bunch of stone down in a large area. And then that was it. They never covered it with asphalt. Since then, it's been stoned in dust and more pits now and more potholes. The same as you go further down Hidden Branch Road and other roads at Gingerwood Estates. And we were told, and I was told every time I recall, the city clerk, that we can't do anything until the last house is built, which made perfectly good sense to me because the heavy trucks would just keep damaging whatever they think. Well, the last house has been built and we at Gingerwood Estates plead with your help to please get these roads back in the condition that they were before Hyde Homes almost destroyed some of the roads. And your help would really be grateful to every one of us here that are from Gingerwood Estates here today and the people that live there. And that's it. That's what I have to say. I gave you some pictures showing the damage. And all you can do and let us know sometime what will be done, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello, council. Thank you so much for letting us speak this evening. I went ahead and I gave you a packet. I don't know if they had given it up to you. No, this. I turned it in, okay. Thank you for hearing us tonight and thank you for representing us so much, Donna. I appreciate that. I've been here two years now. I moved during COVID, so I didn't really get to meet anybody the first year I was here. Now I'm starting to be able to venture out more. And it's a great neighborhood, but the streets are so bad. The one thing that I wanted to show on the first one is 431 coming in, making a right turn onto Owens Road. If it's raining, dark, anything like that at night, it is so dark there and it's not just a ninety-degree angle to make the right turn there. People are going sixty-five miles an hour and they don't pay attention. And they don't see you as you're trying to slow and turn and there's not enough room for two cars to actually be there together at the corner. You've got, one of you have got to go into the dirt. And even the night before last, I had to go into the dirt and wait. And I knew further down in the pictures, you'll see there's big potholes along the road there, along Owens Road. And the one is probably a good foot deep. And it was full of water. So if you didn't know that it was deep like that, you'd go down into it and you'd damage your vehicles. So that's one of the main ones. That's why I put this one on here is because Owens Road also has those big potholes along it. And they did put, I know some of us have called the Band-Aid along the one side to try to make it a little wider for two cars. But it's still, it's hard when you have two vehicles trying to pass. And so that's also in here to show that. Owens Road, a lot of us have to go on that, I mean, Hidden Branch, just like they were saying, there's all potholes in it too. Because I tried actually go further down and around and come back on Chestnut Cove and come in. And so it's like trying to find a way to get to your home to miss all the potholes and all the road the way it is. So I just again showed pictures of hers too. And in my own house, there's a picture way back. You'll see there was a big like sinkhole right at my driveway. I did call the city council. Somebody did come out at one point when I wasn't home and they did smooth it out. They packed it and smoothed it out. And it's, once again, this is current and it's sinking again. And then there's cracks going across my street. And then this is also in front of my house where it's all just graveling up. And so I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you for looking at it. And again, I understand too, you know, they want the last home built. Now that we're at that point, we would really appreciate a time of when they're going to be able to come out and do the roads. And I do want to thank Owens Crossroads Police and everything too, because they do come through the neighborhood. I appreciate that. And they come by and check. And so I appreciate the city council. I appreciate all of you. So thank you so much for letting us speak.
I made the cake.
Yeah, she's on one. So thank you.
I'll make another.
Joshua, do you have anything?
I don't have anything to add. No, they did a great job. So I'm pleased to say both of them.
All right, Sarah, we'll get you net later, not right now. And let's see, who else? Andrea Allen, do you have anything?
No.
And Coral and Eva Marie, y'all have anything?
This gave pretty much got a ton of questions.
Yeah, and I do want to thank you for when we've had a problem. I've been, we've been in our homes six years. We have come to you about streetlights, come to you about pieces of sidewalk missing. You guys have been responsive and especially working with the police. They are very responsive when there's a problem. So I do appreciate the fact that, you know, you do listen and you do act. So I think basically I'll just want to know when, when will this be resolved for us?
All right. We'll have to look at it and get a plan together and see what we can do. And, oh, I missed her. Miss Busker, do you have anything?
No.
Put the clock on her, she's got three minutes.
No, I believe that they've covered everything. I do feel that as far as the city goes, I mean, it's the safety of your people that pay taxes that pull in on that Owens Road, that it is very treacherous and dangerous. And they did come through and fill the potholes with a little bit of gravel and that and the first rain had popped it all back out. But they are measuring anywhere from half a foot to more than a foot in depth. And I mean, some of you guys have big trucks. I have a little SUV, smallest one I could find, and it hurts when you go through there. But as far as the development goes, yeah, it's time for, we didn't know whether it was Hyde or the city or who, but it's time for our development to look like the reason we bought the home there because it was so beautiful and curb appealing.
And that does bring the value of a home down if you don't have a surface.
Right. But the safety of pulling off 431 is certainly a big factor also. But thank you. Wasn't that bad? Was I under three minutes?
You were under a minute.
Can you give us an idea when we may hear something?
Well, probably within a month of you hearing something.
A month, okay.
Good.
How will we?
Maybe sooner.
How will we hear that?
We will send a letter to the neighborhood.
We've got the addresses here.
Thank you.
Send you a letter.
Laura's over the building and planning, so.
My diet's kind of limited right now. All right, let's see. So we'll go on over here. I believe we covered all of this. All right, so first item on the agenda, we've got Resolution 22-035, Agreement from Madison County Dispatch Services. This is just an agreement with 911 System of the Bank for Dispatch for Owens Crossroads Volunteer Fire Corps, or Owens Crossroads City Fire Corps.
It allows us to take calls. I'm willing to dispatch our calls. And the first piece of our proposal.
Do I have a motion to pass Resolution 22-035? Got a motion from James, that's second. From Terry, all in favor. All right, we got Resolution 22-036, ratification of signed agreement for Campbell and Manns Resources LLC. This is dealing with Ramsey Co. This stuff is usually handled in the mayor's office, but their attorney wanted it to be a resolution because I think they've gotten, had issues before.
With other?
With other communities.
Yes. Matt and Tom have reviewed this contract. The attorney for Campbell and Manns Resources were satisfied with a resolution to ratify the signatures and the council was okay with it. So that's all this is.
This is for?
The sewer compensation agreement and the sewer, you know, putting sewer in that subdivision. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Make sure I read that correctly.
All right, so do I have a motion to pass Resolution 22-036? Got a motion from Terry, that's second. Second from Larry, all in favor. So Sarah. Floor is yours.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening to the council. Thank you for having me today. My name is Sarah James. I'm the Director of Economic Development and Planning for TARCOG, or Top of Alabama Regional Council of Governments. It's a mouthful, so we say TARCOG. We serve five counties and forty-six municipalities. Limestone, Madison, Jackson, DeKalb, and Marshall Counties. Some of us, some of you all might know us as the Area Agency on Aging. That's a big component of the work we do. My department focuses on planning and economic development for our five counties and forty-six municipalities. You all are a dues-paying member to TARCOG and you pay us to provide community-based services, both within the aging community and for on the planning and economic development side. We've worked with Owens Crossroads recently on a zoning map update and an annexation map for the city to make sure that you guys have the right maps that you are referencing when you're making zoning decisions. In that conversation, as we were updating those maps, we talked about your comprehensive plan. For those that aren't aware, zoning typically comes from a comprehensive plan and it's an assessment of existing land use and kind of the vision for how Owens Crossroads is growing and developing. And you may realize this, but Kristi and I are pretty certain that this is your comprehensive plan and it's from 1977. So it's definitely likely time to consider a comprehensive update to this plan so that it more accurately reflects your current city and how you are growing and the rapid pace with which you are growing. I have a contract before you all. I believe you've had a chance to review it for our services. Part of that contract also includes a mapping project to help map your sewer system, specifically the manholes. And so we have a GIS specialist on staff. He has a tremble, which he wears on a backpack and he will go around your entire city to map them in real time and collect that data in real time and then develop a great map for manhole mapping. So you'll see there's kind of two parts to the contract. One is for that mapping services and then the other is for our comprehensive plan. And I just would like to say that, you know, the total contract for both projects is a not-to-exceed fifteen thousand dollar project. That is incredibly discounted in terms of what you would hire a private company or a private consultant to do for you. And that's part of the reason we exist as a council of governments is that we are subsidized through different state grants and federal grants to be able to provide these services at a very, really just at a staff cost rate. You don't, none of that includes our indirect costs or anything like that. It's simply just for the staff time worked on the project. I'll stop there and see if there are any questions or if you guys need any additional information in order to vote on the resolution.
Well, then should we do a comprehensive plan?
A comprehensive plan typically looks at your vision for twenty years. So, or fifteen to twenty, really. And ideally, as you go through that, there's a strategy, an action plan that is developed. So as you go through those fifteen to twenty years, you kind of check in on it every, I'd say, three to five and make sure you're tracking. If after five years or ten years, it's kind of growth has, you know, it far exceeded what was originally, you know, estimated at, you can kind of look at tweaking or lightly updating. In this situation, we're probably going to do a very broad brush, kind of new, I'd say essentially a new plan for you all that you can then work off of for twenty years. This is great for your planning commission and your zoning board adjustment to be able to reference and look at when things are coming in, how do we want development to go. We will create a future land use map, so you have kind of an existing of where you are now. And then there'll be a future land use approach of where you want to be. How do you want to, you know, activate the corridor on 431? Where do you want additional housing developments to go? That kind of thing. And then also other things about infrastructure and planning for school growth and that sort of thing. It's just a holistic plan that you guys can reference and look to for how you are moving forward as a community. Any other questions? I will sit down. Thank you very much for your time.
I had one of these done in 2006. We need to go back in the book.
We haven't found anything getting through all the files.
I've seen, sorry to interrupt. But I've seen that, I vaguely recall seeing that one, but I've not been able to find a digital copy of that. I have seen it in a binder somewhere, but, so that 2006 one is still probably worth kind of heavily updating in the sense that from here, from where we're at, 2006 to now is drastic.
The numbers have doubled.
It's worth it.
At minimum, yeah.
Yeah, you just have to consider, you know, who you are, where you are, who your neighbor is, how it was just rated the best country or best city to live in in the country, that sort of thing. I mean, growth is coming and so it's all about how you want to absorb that growth.
Yes. Right. The manhole study has a multitude of benefits, not just the sewer. It will help the police because it will map all the houses, the rooftops in there. It will help the fire department because it's going to map all the rooftops and all that too.
So the rooftops will do smart business development as well, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
All right, do I have a motion to pass Resolution 22-037? Got a motion from Larry, that's second. Second from James, all in favor. All right, next we've got an ordinance, 22-029, Standing Order Regarding Conducting Hearings, Proceedings, and Trials by Audio-Video Communications.
I can talk it. So basically, the state and the county are already doing this. We've talked about doing this. James, you may recall Paulie talking with you about this with the new audiovisual equipment. This is just putting in place to cover us, you know, just in case anything comes up. They're already utilizing these. Is that correct, Jason? They're already utilizing this in our court, yeah, in our courts. So we just need to put this in place for coverage.
And all we can have is a motion to consider tonight because we don't have.
As long as, you have four here, you can have a motion to consider and a motion to pass. Because as long as you.
All vote.
To consider, yes.
This is good because this is what she's already done. This is saving us money. And it's saving us transportation time and with COVID, flu, everything. This gives us an option we did not have before to have virtual court meetings with the people that are currently incarcerated. So this is good.
All right, do I have a motion to consider Ordinance 22-029? Got a motion from Larry to consider, that's second.
Oh, me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm not trying to upset the apple garden. Just a little bit of background on this. So when COVID first hit, the Supreme Court of Alabama entered an order that basically allowed this. As prior to that, that was never allowed. There were several extensions of that order. And I believe the latest one expired yesterday, or maybe it was the end of September. But essentially, the 23rd Judicial Circuit, which Madison County has enacted, basically, I think this is similar to.
It's exactly it.
It's the same one that we're using, that is in this proposal. And so that's just kind of the backstory on it, just to make sure that everyone's getting their, you know, criminal side constitutional right to defend their, you know, accusers, to defend themselves. And so this is kind of an addition to that. But, and I mentioned this to Ms. Eason, the only thing I would add in here is this does not address municipal courts. So I think if we add the language municipal court where it talks about in the third paragraph, where it talks about all the different, it's their full order for pretrial motion hearings and civil, and it lists a bunch, and criminal matters in the circuit courts, district courts, and public courts. I would just ask that it include municipal courts to that because that is what our court is here.
And that can be added before signature?
Yeah, before signature. Just, that's a little of the backstory on what now.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so I've got a motion and a second to consider and I think that passed.
No, you didn't pass for all of them.
Okay, so. Got a second?
All in favor. Yeah, okay.
All right. So a motion to adopt with revisions as noted by Tom. Got a motion from James, that's second. Second from Terry, all in favor. Kristi, you have anything?
I do. The first thing I wanted to give you all these. These are pan books for mayors and council members. As of when the league had them produced. Those are acknowledgement receipt of pan book, Mary, you've already gotten yours. There's your paper. Here's your pan book. So those are like the rules and regulations that the league puts out. So those are just something that I need y'all to look through and then sign the acknowledgement receipt. Another thing is the public works truck's been picked up and is ready to be put to work. There are a few cosmetic things like proper department labeling and stuff like that, but they're going to work on that at downtime. The Board of Abatement appointments have been finalized. They are as follows. Scott Baker, Miranda Steele, Tony Craig, Houston Johnson, Larry Furlough, Ben Smallwood, James Mann, Peggy Harris, Terry Mann, Bo Hill, Tim Rodd, Andrew Craig. And a Board of Abatement organizational meeting has been scheduled for Monday, November 7th at 6 o'clock. And Laura and I will be here for that. The attorneys are working on our fire department mutual aid agreements between Big Cove, New Hope, and OXR BFD. And I understand they're getting close on those. And then the short-term rental ordinance that was brought up last month is being reviewed and modified by the attorneys in need and they're going to be, it will be presented for consideration at the next council meeting on November 15th. With two people moving out of the community from the Board of Adjustments, they need two supernumerary appointments. And so Laura and I suggest asking Bo Hill and Peggy Harris that were appointed to the Board of Abatement to be appointed to the Board of Adjustments. So that's something that y'all need to decide on. Supernumerary members would be a fill-in if there was any of the regular members absent. Otherwise, they would just attend the meetings, be in on the discussion that they would not have a voting part unless someone was absent. Y'all have any discussion on that? Y'all all good with that? Yeah? Okay, good. And the final thing is, we've been contacted by. Here they are, sorry. Cabinet's dispensary seeking to set up here. Y'all are aware that Greg Allen is selling his property and this is where they're hoping to move in. And I just want to make sure that y'all are all still on board.
And I just want to make sure that y'all are all still on board with that before I respond to that in a letter. We did pass it, however, I mean, this is the actual thing happening, so I just wanted to make sure. I spoke to the mayor, he said I should bring it up before y'all.
Just let y'all know what's potentially coming in.
They asked here if there are going to be 1,000 feet from the property line to property line from any K-12 school to care our childcare facility. I know that the childcare facility that was down on that area of 431 is now closed, so...
Do you have any questions, too? Not near school, if we're here.
The only thing they're near is the church across the street, Redemption. But they don't have childcare or school or anything, they just have Sunday and Wednesdays. And I will tell them that in the letter, but I just want to make sure y'all are on board before we go forward.
Are we far enough away, are they far enough away from the church? I know it's a church, but that...
I understand.
Years ago...
I can get CT or Jason to run the thing and see how far they are.
I know years ago, this guy wanted to open beer joint close to church, and he was just inside. He, I only had church on Sunday.
Yes, sir.
The state would not allow him to have a license. This has been 100 years ago, it seems like, but, you know, not a problem.
And they're asking, I mean, they're doing their due diligence by asking, so...
We make sure we don't fall within...
Yes, sir.
Last second, we know they're half a foot too close, so...
Yes, sir.
Is it from the, is it from the front door or from the property?
Property line. So can one of y'all check on that for me tomorrow?
The property line, right.
Does that not apply to churches?
It doesn't apply to churches, but...
I get his point, and this, I guess if they, so this, so first off, this, while we did this, this could be huge revenue for us.
No.
It will not be revenue for us?
The taxes on these all go to the state.
Really?
It's something we found out since the first...
Because when we were at that meeting, it looked like we were going to get revenue from this, so we will not get revenue.
The only revenue we'll get is their $114 business license.
And any, any other stuff they do business in the town?
And then if they do business in the town, we'll get...
Or if they sell other things there, which I don't know how that's going to work out legally, because there's a lot of questions. All right, so this is my question, because you guys, the smart people on that side of the room. So we approve this, let's just say hypothetically, on all those hypotheticals. There's no daycare, there's no childcare at the church right now, there's nothing that specifically precludes a church, right?
Right.
What happens if the church decides to start a daycare? And they're within the 1,000 feet. And if outside 1,000 feet, we're good, right? But if they're inside 1,000 feet, what happens? Is the church just told no, or do they have to pack up the...
I would think that would have to be, that'd be something we'd have to address with the state prior to that, that we'd probably need to get an answer to, because I was, I actually was thinking about that as well, if somebody did start up, because will that be grandfathered in, or will they be excluded from starting that business up?
Tom, what's your opinion?
I don't think, I think they're going to be forced, they would be forced to shut down and move.
Right.
They would give priority to the church daycare or whatever?
I, I think, yeah.
Okay.
Medical cannabis dispensary.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes, ma'am. Sorry, Mayor. That's your job. Sorry.
I just heard, because you probably thought that this was going to be a money-making operation to support...
We were told that at first.
Okay, but here's my thing. I'm thinking right now that we're going to be taking resources from the police department away from people to support and monitor and keep them following the rules and obeying the law. So it's going to cost us as taxpayers this legal safety support, but yet we're not going to benefit from it. Is anything in that agreement that they provide their own security resources, other than us tying up the small amount of resources we have and overstretching people's...
So, sir, I was at the League of Municipalities Conference when this was brought up and discussed, and I asked Kristi to bring it forward, so I will tell you what I know, that's nothing, unfortunately. So it's brand-new ground. When this was started, there are only, this first year, I think it's three licenses, is all there's going to be. And so you had to be proactive if you wanted to chase one of these, because on paper, we're building houses, and we're trying to fix streets and fix roads, and we don't have enough retail to support our growth.
I think cannabis is not the way we want to go.
But again, I...
They've got no benefit, and you can get no money. You can tell the church, if you want to open a childcare, you're going to have to close and move.
But again, when they presented this, they presented it as...
Sales tax revenue.
Sales tax revenue. A substantial amount of sales tax revenue. Enough for us to at least consider putting our hat in the, in the ring for it.
Since we have no other sales tax revenue basically in the city, you know?
No, no.
So we have some things to think about, but your concerns are very valid.
Yes.
We certainly do not want to tax our police force or pull resources away, especially if we're not going to get funded back, because it's not something we just want to do because we want to do it. If it's not going to benefit, then obviously it wouldn't make sense. I can't speak for everybody else, but that's my opinion on that.
The bottom line, for good government, how does it benefit the town and the people? It's not.
Well, again, we just got handed some new information, so again, this is one of those things of, we don't know yet, and I don't have an answer, because...
We kind of do, because they told you we'd get any of the money.
I know, I know that, I understand that, but I also understand that I have a presentation at the House where I sat through for nearly an hour listening to this, that says very differently. So there's a lot of questions that probably need to get Tom involved in this, and we need to make sure we're reading to make sure we fully understand before we make a decision. And that's probably kind of where we're at.
I agree. I agree.
And I will say, Mayor, council members, I mean, I think, you know, if our memory serves, what we voted on two or three months ago was just the potential of if someone were to approach the city with a license, and that was what was approved. It sounds like now we've got someone that's actually pursuing that, but from my understanding of the, as Mr. Mann stated, they are being very, very stingy in giving out these licenses statewide. And so I think if the, if the city were to get a business that is going to open one in the city of Owens Crossroads, while there may not be sales tax revenue from that business, there's going to be a lot of people coming into the city that would not be coming here otherwise. And so there's potential for...
Yes, sandwiches and soda pops and munchies, I guess, because I don't know anything about it. I mean, that's, that's, that's...
But it's, it's very, 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 as you say, three.
Three.
Is that, is it the whole state?
The whole state.
Yeah.
And the fact that, honestly, we didn't think we'd be considered, but we are geographically in a good position, which is why we was discussed. I'm actually shocked somebody reached out, to be honest. But there's a lot we've got to obviously figure out, because I'm still not 100% sure on that, because they sure presented that very differently when they told us to be proactive and pass legislation ahead of time, and they, they sure presented it very differently. So we've got to figure a lot of things out.
I have a PowerPoint that I can scan to you.
Okay.
Okay. And everyone, I can scan everything. Okay, so we're going to table that for now.
Yeah, we're...
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Laura, you got anything?
Just a permit report that you have there before you, from September 27th through today active, we had $3,494.35 worth of building permits. We have got estimated home values of $1,275, $275.105. The permits have slowed down because Hagspring subdivision, all permits, building permits have been issued for the 31 homes that they will have there. We currently have permits for 62 homes in Richmond, one sales trailer, one pump station, one irrigation system, and one road sign. This leaves 55 homes and four commercial tracts left for Richmond to develop. And Tim is always busy doing inspections, very busy doing inspections. And it won't be long until we start getting Ramsey Cove and Quail Hollow permit requests. Also, I want to add on to what she's talking about, you all received welcome packets tonight. The green folder is where y'all would hold it up. There it is. Laura has worked hard to gather all that information, and we work together on the documentation inside. We put those together. So we've already started giving those out. Laura, how many did you give out today?
I think about four today.
That's awesome, yeah.
They're actually look good.
So those are going on to all of our new move-ins, people who are moving into the community. And as y'all saw, they hold information on churches, businesses, schools, the city, different divisions of the city.
Anything they need to know to get their house up going, their, you know, water apartments, sewer, everything, that they do, trash.
Did you all send synagogues in there?
We did the ones that were in the, the community. We sent out letters, all thank you.
But if you have anything you would like to go in, and if you want to bring groceries, we can put those in.
We'll be happy to stick them in there.
Okay.
Because we've only given out four, so, yeah.
All right. Tim, you got anything?
Just one thing to remind everybody that as of October 1st, we have went to the 2018 Any permits filed after October 1st will be by the standard of the 2018 code.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, Tracy?
Yes, sir, just really busy with our Jason Walker, and doing an excellent job getting me some tickets, too. But other than that, I'm good, just really, really feeling, really, really busy.
CT, you got anything?
Busy, things up, just stuff around here.
Will? Trace is not here. Anybody want to report on service?
She has included her report in there. Things are happening, as always, she's doing very well with getting collections in. It's amazing how much they reduce on the past due. And she's still chasing after ones that are closed and need to be opened. Her biggest headache, I think, are the rental homes from different commercial groups that own several homes. Those are her biggest headaches, I think, so she's not well, that's why she's not here.
Gee. Sir, we had a, we had a fairly, fairly slow month, which is good for us, good for the community. We had 127 calls for service here in the month of, oh, September. We had five traffic accidents, 29 written warnings, 44 traffic tickets, 10 arrests, and 26 casualties.
Bruce?
Yes, sir. Moving forward, always moving forward to provide those services for the city.
So EMT-wise, we're running EMT calls.
We are currently running medical calls. We're providing medical, emergency medical services for the community, sir, yes, sir. We're continuing to work on the rest of the services.
All right. We'll go around the table. Terry, you got it?
People here who talk about subdivisions and growth, we've already had some meetings. We understand what we're dealing with, and we're aware, but we appreciate y'all coming out, and we already are working on it. We've already had some meetings, some walkthroughs and things already. One thing you need to note, turning off 431 onto the side road, that is state. So that's something we'll have to deal with, state, and we don't know what would be involved in that or how long that might take. But the rest of it, we're, we're struggling to do the best we can, but we are working with the people and trying to get some things done, so...
Thank you.
Do, really appreciate y'all coming forward and bringing it to our attention, because this is how we know.
That's right.
And we do appreciate it a lot. So we are, be aware that we are, we've already had at least one meeting a few weeks back, and you're, same thing you brought up, we were talking about, so we are aware of it, and we're working on it.
Thank you.
So just bear with us while we ask.
Thank you.
So again, you're always welcome to bring your concerns to us, we try to help, so...
You might just come and sit, anyway.
We would, welcome.
Okay.
But that's all I got.
All right, thank you.
All right. Larry, you got anything?
James? Paul, I want some stuff. Bruce is back there. So yes, we have started responding to EMS calls. Kind of jumped a little because we were, been without service for so long, we're not fully set up yet, but we are trying to cover, so a little bit of patience with us. We're trying to cover 167 hours a week of three people right now, which is difficult, but we are responding. I think we've only missed one so far, and that's more than we've had the last two years. So very thankful and very proud of what they're doing. And we do have a solution going forward. I don't want to get into tonight, but I just want you to know, Mr. Mayor and the public know that, look for some information coming. We think we have a way to remedy this to help get us more help coming, and so we'll present that hopefully at the next meeting. We are actively seeking, getting 911 dispatch now, which was huge, and the county worked with us on that, and that's been a huge thanks to them for that, getting this set up. And one of the things we learned through tornadoes a few years ago and through COVID and some other stuff is having fuel supply on hand is important. We have a gasoline supply on hand, we do not have a diesel supply on hand, so that's why we purchased the diesel tank, and it's on its way. So we will have our own bulk storage for most diesel and gasoline in the event of emergency, part of our further emergency plan, and that is going forward, so. Uniforms, badges, all the things that it takes to put an apartment together from scratch are in place and ordered, or artwork's being finished, and then it'll be ordered, and that stuff will all start flowing in here very soon. So I think that's all I've got.
Okay. Can you go back? Anybody? All right. Do I have a motion? Got a motion to adjourn to have a second. Second. Motion from James, second from Terry, all in favor. Thank y'all for coming.